Uh, seven, seven. Uh, please do the roll call.
Mm-hmm. Mark.
Eric.
Here.
Eric?
Here.
Oscar.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, who agenda? Any changes? Go ahead.
Uh, looks like on the first item on the uh, agenda or on the minutes, uh, has myself as calling and meaning to order a labor at your office.
Okay, we're doing the agenda here.
Yeah.
There was one.
Move the, move the agenda. Second? Then move by Oscar and then second later to prove the agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, now the minutes, you said, uh, okay.
Uh, yeah, now, number one says call the order and has myself doing so and you Richard.
Okay. Get that through.
Yep.
Okay. Anything else? Need change?
I saw it honestly proven with the changes.
Seven?
A seven.
Motion by Oscar, second, I might to prove the agenda with the one change. Uh, Richard will call the, whether you mean the, all in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion carries. Uh, looks like, uh, anybody here for? Public forum? Other than, uh, I guess under the public forum, that's where we're, we're playing the case.
Yeah, that's. Matt on Thursday is gonna be presenting to the council, your request to amend ordinance for requirements for members for the planning commission. We're supposed to have seven, two of which are supposed to be outside of the city area of influence. It's difficult to find those people outside, so the requirement is going to change to either or. They can either be outside the city, or they can be reside within the city. We get more volunteers within the city, but having that, that ordinance amended will allow us to fill all the seats up for planning commission.
Okay, so it'd be maximum material outside?
Yes, yeah. Just, just a heads up, that's all that is, just to let you, let you all know that that's gonna happen.
Alright. Anybody else wanna speak to the public forum? Gary, none, we'll go to the number eleven, planning commission, right?
Commission, we have P E C here, Lance, I don't know how to pronounce the last name.
Exactly like the spell, Onstock.
Onstock. Um, this is gonna be putting on some training for us, and let me get over to it. Down arrows?
Work, perfect, thank you.
Yep.
This is your person, Commissioner, it's good evening. Um, we're excited, we're always excited to get out of the office when I let us out of the office and come talk to the people that are, you know, uh, doing the hard work in the communities, right? We know you guys all do it for the paycheck, so generally a pretty well compensated position sitting up there as a planning commissioner, right? And it's easy, no one's ever mad with you, they always come in good spirits and only just support the decisions that you make, right? It's my experience anyway. Uh, definitely not, so we're excited to kinda come out and just talk with you guys a little bit about planning generally, right? So, no real difficult decisions for you guys to make tonight. Um, we'll just kinda walk you through some things that hopefully will be helpful. Typically, this is about, uh, you know, I'm hoping to not be up here just talking to you guys for longer than fifteen, twenty minutes or so. And at any point, it definitely isn't a lecture, this isn't a classroom, so at any point, uh, cut me off, argue with me. Uh, if you want me to explain something a little bit differently by all means, do so. So, we're, we're here for you guys, we've got, as P E C, have a long history with Kitchin. Um, we currently serve as your on-call planners in addition to other things, so when Dustin or Matt need some extra horsepower, or down something off someone else, uh, they'll call me and, and, uh, I'll see what I can do to help, so, uh, that's our relationship, so I'm happy to finally be in, in front of you guys, uh, and, and kinda walk you through some of the things that we've learned over the years and all the different communities that we work in. So, a little bit about myself, um, for the past fourteen, fifteen years, I primarily worked on the public side, so by training and experience, I'm a, I'm an urban planner, community planner, land use planner, any something planner, so we're, we're known by many different things. Um, worked in big cities, uh, smaller cities, and kinda everywhere in between. Um, been a public sector planner, managed planning departments, and then at some point decided I was gonna try the whole city management thing, and it was great, but I like planning much more, so, uh, been with P E C for a little while now, doing the private side, but a lot of what we do is we work with our municipal city, uh, partners, and we do on-call planning, um, we do project-based planning, you guys probably remember one of my former colleagues, Aaron Ebock, who was working on some, some projects here over the summer, um, so we do a lot of projects like that, in addition to all the boring engineer stuff that, that I don't do, um, but that I rely on quite, quite a lot, so, part of what we do, myself and Kylie, so who's in the back, who's another, uh, planner in our office, and my supervisor in the field to make sure I don't get everyone in too much trouble, so she's taking notes about how, how, all the things I'm saying, it's gonna get us in trouble, so, if you see her jotting something down, you know I probably messed something up. Um, so we do a lot of work with our municipal partners, but then we also do, uh, we have, you know, as, as the, the services that I lead at P E C, we have kinda two teams, we have the planning team, which is a lot of what we're gonna talk about today, but then we also have our land development team, so the way that I, I kind of explain it is, we might be on one side of the counter, taking a zoning application on behalf of a city in the morning, and then we might be at another city in the afternoon submitting a zoning applica- uh, application on behalf of one, a landowner that's asked us to help. So, we, we see both sides, uh, we write regulations, and then we draw projects and develop projects within those regulations, so, from A to Z, we see it, we've experienced a lot, um, and that's generally what we do on, on a daily basis, so. All of that to say, we've seen some stuff in, in, in our experience, um, we kinda know what goes well, uh, and where we can kind of avoid some pitfalls, and I'm sure you guys have probably really looked to, to Dustin and Matt in the past for, for guidance and assistance, so. What we're really gonna cover tonight is, uh, um, we're gonna talk a little bit about what we do as planning professionals, so planners and the planning commission. Uh, what is it, or why is it that we do what we do? Um, what tools should we all be using, and that's gonna be really important for when we talk about a specific process in a sec, and towards the end. Um, kind of our fundamental duties that we have as, as professional staff, um, and as appointed officials as the planning commission. Uh, we'll briefly kinda talk about the types of people that we work with and kinda understanding how we all fit together, and then, um, the one kinda specific piece, the piece that you guys probably deal with most often, are when somebody submits an application to you to rezone a piece of property. Everyone's favorite up there, right? Um, how can we navigate that process, um, effectively, right? Cause we're all on the planning commission and working for the city because we have some sort of civic responsibility, or we care enough to, again, have that large salary to be up there. Um, but, there are some pitfalls, right? Like, I've worked for cities, I've been, not me personally, uh, but planning commissions and organizations that I've worked for have been sued because of what the decisions we've made in rooms like this, I don't know if anyone here has, um, but it's not overly fun, so hopefully we can give you a little bit of an idea of how you can stay out of that situation and make good, solid decisions for the community, cause again, that's what we do. So, generally speaking, as planners, so both professional planners, uh, staff planners, and just planning commissioners, why do we generally exist? So, I, I think if I ask somebody why we do planning, or if I ask a group of people, each person is gonna give me a different answer, and that's perfectly fine. I work with a lot of really specialized individuals, uh, roadway designers, electrical engineers, landscape architects, so everyone has kinda got their focus. As planners, we are very much generalists, the type of decisions you guys make and what we work on during the day, um, we have to know a little bit about everything that makes a community a community, so, yes, we definitely decide or make recommendations, make determinations on location for different things in our community, and it's most basic work, that's what we're doing, right? Um, elevate it a little bit, what we really should try to think about is those goals and kinda the policies that generally shape the communities that we live in. The decision you're making about a rezoning application from an agricultural zoning to a commercial zoning seems like a very black and white problem to address, right? Um, put all of those together, all the daily work that Dustin and Matt and that you guys do, what we're really talking about is how housing works in our community, where people live, um, how they move throughout our communities, and health of the people that make up our communities, whether that's physical health, or mental health, or social health. Um, the decisions that we're making and the recommendations we're making impact all of this, even if you're just doing a agricultural to a multifamily zoning, so, all of that should factor into it, so, things like climate sustainability, um, the economic health of both our organizations, so our city, uh, but also the individuals that live within those cities, and basically any, anything else that has to do with humans, so. When I tell friends and acquaintances, they're like, you know, what do you do for a living? And I'm like, well, I'm a planner, and they, most people generally have no idea what that means. Uh, the way that I generally tend to describe it is, I look at communities, we look at communities and, and cities, much like, uh, you know, um, I don't even know, uh, you know, someone who runs a zoo, right, looks at the, uh, the habitat for the animals, we just do it for human habitat. So, the way our streets, uh, influence the development adjacent to the streets, and the way that factors into the way we, um, are either mentally, physically, economically healthy. So, we put as much attention into the way our cities are developed as anyone else looking at habitat for any other animal, our focus is just people. So, uh, from a tools perspective, I'm sure you guys are probably all well familiar with these, um, but there's kinda three primary tools that we use all day, every day as planners, and that you all should be very, and I'm sure you are, uh, extremely familiar with. We have our zoning regulations, we have our subdivision regulations, so both ordinances, both codes, right, both laws, local laws. And then we have generally what I would consider kind of our long-range planning documents, so comprehensive plan is the one that we're, we'll talk about a little bit tonight. It could be, uh, a neighborhood plan, so like a comprehensive plan focused on one neighborhood, it could be a transportation plan, just looking at our roads, uh, water, wastewater treatment plan, any sort of these plans that generally cities will hire subject matter experts to produce. Those, uh, are considered long-range plans, so that combination of our zoning regulations, our subdivision regulations, and our long-range plans are the tools that we need to be based, uh, basing all of our work on. The moment we start to transition outside of those plans is the moment where we start getting a little fragile and, 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 uh, presenting issues or concerns. That's not to say, uh, these things can't be amended if there's something in there that we don't like, but we've gotta really be, uh, in-depth in our zoning regulations, our subdivision regulations, and our long-range planning documents. And each one of them functions just a little bit different, so, the first one we'll talk about is kind of our, our comprehensive plan. Um, comprehensive plan, every city that has zoning has a comprehensive plan. It's a requirement by state statute, you can't exercise the police power of telling someone what they can and cannot do with a piece of private property without a plan that's informing you how to implement zoning. So, if you don't have a comp plan, you, you're not supposed to have zoning. So, uh, essentially, why we should have a comp plan, right? It's required, now, not all comp plans are created equally, you guys actually have, you know, the one that I'm showing here, right, was done by P E C, I think in two thousand fourteen, fifteen, somewhere around there, and then we've kinda been working in pieces and phases to kinda update the next comprehensive plan as well. But at its highest level, comprehensive planning should be, um, it, it should kinda really, you know, dictate that vision that we have for the community at the community scale, so the entire community. When I say we, it's not me and Kylie in our office writing these plans, it's not you guys there or the city staff, um, it should be, uh, developed by the entire community. That's why you generally will do various engagement events. So, if you do those things, these comprehensive plans, they should be a record of kinda, of the, of the, of the community's goals that they share. So, if we're making determinations and recommendations based on this, then essentially we should be making recommendations and decisions based on what the community has said that they want. So, what Aaron worked with you guys on recently is these comprehensive plans will kinda, they'll, they'll look at, uh, they'll kinda have a data component, we'll look at census information, how quickly you're growing, where you're growing, we'll look at your existing water systems, and you kinda, stormwater systems, and sanitary sewers, so, we'll capture kinda what's, where you guys are at now, uh, where, what's been happening, uh, over a certain amount of past, and then that way, that'll kinda help us predict the future, so it should be encapsulating all of those different components. So, this bottom part, this last point, is, uh, the part where I see most communities fall short. They'll do a plan, and they'll spend X amount of money on it, and a year I'm doing it, and it's a ten-year plan, and they don't touch it for ten years. And a lot can change in a community in a much less amount of time, so, this should be, not only, we'll talk a little bit about this, um, it should be reviewed annually by statute, by state law, um, but it should be updated, uh, continuously as well. Doesn't mean you rewrite the entire thing every year, um, but maybe a staff person, you know, redoes, uh, every two years when there's new survey information that comes out, maybe every two years somebody's updating the demographics or the population to make sure it's either pacing in the projection or falling short, and what kind of implications that might have on the decisions that we make. So, your zoning regulations, uh, this is primarily the, you know, one of the two primary tools we use to implement the comprehensive plan. So, here, and we're gonna talk a little bit about, uh, the difference between the legislative decisions that we make, and then, anyone ever talked to you guys about quasi-judicial nature of what you do, and I'm not gonna go super lawyer on you, but I'm gonna give you some terms, so, we'll talk a little bit about what that means, but this is a quasi-judicial nature of, uh, a component of what you guys have signed up to do. So, here, we're really talking about, uh, telling someone very specifically what they can or cannot do with a particular piece of property. Compare that to your comprehensive plan, we're talking citywide, right? We're talking about broad goals, um, here, we're talking about specific regulations for specific property. It's really gonna dictate the way something is built, um, how big it can be, what, uh, it can look like in some cases, how close it can be to our streets or to the neighbors, um, so it's really, uh, driving, you know, a lot-specific or site-specific influence into the way our cities look and how we interact with the structures. It also, like comp plan, comprehensive plans, and I, I might revert and shorten comprehensive to comp plan, just, that's where, where my brain goes, but that's what I'm talking about if I, if I slip, so, just like comprehensive plans, uh, these should be, um, updated, reviewed regularly as well. I think your guys' are from twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, so it's probably the newest set of zoning regulations that I've seen, we work in a lot of communities. Uh, we'll, we do planning for communities that haven't updated their zoning regulations since the eighties. Um, I'm gonna tell you now, like, there are things that I learned as a young planner fifteen years ago that I can't believe I used to say publicly. We have learned a lot about zoning regulations over the past fifteen years. Uh, the way we did zoning fifteen years ago, twenty years ago, thirty years ago, completely different than the way we do zoning now. Um, so, that's kudos to you guys and to the staff for having a set of regulations that, uh, at least is in the twenty-first century, so you're beating other communities. So, you guys are probably real familiar with your zoning regulations, um, the other primary tool we use to enforce and kinda implement the, the comprehensive plan are the subdivision regulations, so, uh, Dustin, Kylie, and myself were working on a plat that you guys will see in some, at a future meeting last week. Uh, so this is really, um, this dictates how, so again, zoning, we're talking about lots generally, right? Comprehensive plans, we're talking about entire communities, the subdivision regulations are really talking about that in-between, so, if I've got forty acres and I wanna develop it, how is that gonna be split into individual lots? How are the streets gonna be laid out? Uh, what types of services from an infrastructure perspective have to be, uh, taken, you know, accounted for? And then, like, how, when I do lay out those streets, how do I need to design and build those streets? So, it's really looking to, um, make sure that we are planning developments in a way that is conducive to good, healthy growth patterns with a, primarily financially, right? So, if I've got this forty acres and I look at just this forty acres, and I split it into lots and blocks and streets, um, how is that setting up the next forty acres? So, are my streets gonna connect? Like, we generally as planners wanna make sure we're planning for street networks, right? Um, is the drainage that's gonna be required to be improved gonna be sighted or located appropriately and not to damage anyone downstream or upstream from whatever that drainage way is? So, it's really dictating how developments happens at a slightly larger scale than, uh, than zoning. Subdivision regulations, zoning regulations, and our long-range plans are what we do all day, every day, it's what you pay professional staff to do, um, and they're the primary re, or, uh, you know, uh, documents and guidance that you all should be using, and you guys are making decisions up here. So, any questions about zoning regulations, subdivision regulations, comp plans, anything else before I get into some of the stuff you guys do?
Malcolm, question or where I would wanna, or ask you questions? A lot of my issues is, is in regards to definitions of some of the, I call the weasel words of, of the various plans that we have. For instance, if you're looking at the subdivision regulations overhead, one of the things is, uh, it looks to ensure the public health, safety, and general welfare. And as we know, general welfare can cover a whole broad spectrum of stuff, especially at higher levels of government, and gets us involved in things that we, we have no business being involved in. As a planner, what do you see when you envision as a, um, um, a goal or a vision to incorporate such language? Is there something, you, you had a list in your mind of X, Y, Z, A, B, C, that falls under general welfare?
No.
No.
No, and that's why it's, it's broad by nature, right? Just like you, you guys can probably understand, um, and guess where some of that language comes from at the federal level, right? Like, some of our founding, yeah, our founding documents use these very same words, right? So, it's broad by nature, and so much of what we do as planners is broad by nature, right? So, what I advocate for when reviewing a subdivision that's in the benefit of, you know, general welfare, and I'll never write, uh, a staff report that says this development furthers the general welfare, right? Uh, but, let's say, let's just boil it down to like drainage, something extremely technical, right? Um, this drainage, or like I might perceive, or the way that they're handling the drainage in this plat, uh, I might perceive as causing a potential threat to someone downstream, right? Like, I can't tell you exactly what that threat is, but you as the applicant have to prove to me that you're not. So, it can be, it's, it's kind of an all-encompassing, flowerly, and there's gonna be a few times in here I'm gonna say, I don't really like this language, uh, but this is what's in the state statutes that allow us to have these, um, but that's what Dustin is here for, and that's what we're here for, is to help you in application-specific circumstances, assess them underneath these, and that's why you guys are appointed as members of the community to really legislate that.
So, what I'm hearing you say is that the comprehensive plan and some of our regulations for zoning and subdivision type things gives us broad, uh, flexibility to try to interpret what's being asked of us to, and then apply it. That's where I think the real challenge comes, is you're, you're responding to an applicant, uh, either thumbs up or thumbs down on, on an action. And, and my personal viewpoint is comprehensive plans are, are just comprehensive and very broad guidelines. And I know some others see it more as a very strict, uh, almost commandment kind of approach. And, uh, so I'm looking for how we, how we, as a commission, you know, work our way through these things without too much difficulties.
Yeah, and for comprehensive planning itself is extremely broad portion of what all planners do, uh, one, you know, the comprehensive plan for Kitchin can look completely different than the comprehensive plan for Andover and Wichita, or Kansas City, or everywhere else, right? Some of them are very, very specific, very, very prescriptive, and some are very, very broad and very visionary or conceptual. Um, what I say most often about comprehensive planning is if you're basing your determinations, your decisions, your recommendations, um, from an informed perspective of your comprehensive plan, right, wrong, and different, right? But if you're using the comprehensive plan to, uh, to justify the decisions and recommendations, uh, it's going to be considered as a reasonable recommendation or decision. How you interpret a broad goal such as, yeah, I'm trying to think of one off the top of my head, but, encourage developments, healthy development patterns on Main Street, like, that's a very common, let's say, comprehensive plan goal. If you have an application that comes before you, and you say, I think this works towards achieving that goal, your, your decision, your recommendation is, at its surface, considered reasonable. You might have a very different interpretation, say this works against that, that's reasonable. But between five or seven individuals, and then ultimately the city council, the idea is between, how many is or does this council?
Five. Five and the mayor.
Five and the mayor, so between, you know, twelve, thirteen, fourteen people, surely we can come up with a good answer. But yeah, there is no, what we've learned a lot about planning generally, specifically zoning and subdivision regulations, is that it is not a science. There is no one hundred percent correct answer to any of these scenarios, uh, and we'll talk a little bit about how we weigh those things here in a little while, but, uh, if you want the, a black and white answer, then planning is not for, not for you. You gotta be very comfortable in the gray. But we'll try to get you, you know, we'll try to define a little bit of color here toward the end. So, I'm not gonna cover this very, very, uh, in-depth, cause you guys have probably, um, you probably understand your most, you know, fundamental duties as a planning commissioner, uh, but you guys work on behalf, are appointed by, and I'm assuming I'm correct when I say this, that you guys are appointed by the city council, or at least approved by the city council. Um, so you guys, and your most fundamental point is, uh, uh, you advise those elected officials, your governing body, on community planning matters. Um, so when you're saying you serve as an advisory board, um, that's pretty broad in itself, and we'll talk a little bit more about that. Um, but you should be the champion of the plans that are guiding the daily work of your professional staff, so, uh, your task with monitoring and making decisions and recommendations that further the plans of the city, whether that's the comprehensive plan or the ordinances that are in place in your zoning and subdivision. You know, I'm sure the reason why you all agreed to be planning commissioners is to conduct the public hearings, um, but there are a number of, obviously, as you guys know, uh, that's one of the core tenets of what we do at planning commissions is that we allow for the public to have their voice heard on community planning matters. A lot of times this is the forum for that. There are times when you guys are the board of final action, as they say, so you make decisions in specific circumstances. There are times when you make recommendations to your governing body. You should be reviewing at the capital improvement plan if the city has one, if that's, if this, that's not something you're familiar with, that's not uncommon. But again, I debated whether or not covering compreh- or capital improvement plans is part of one of those tools that we use. But on the front end, but I decided not to, but just know that by, by statute, if we have a capital improvement plan, so these large project type plans that take multiple years of planning and financing, big projects, right? We should be reviewing that annually to make sure it's also in conformance to our comprehensive plan. And then again, my statute, you should be reviewing the comprehensive, yeah, the comprehensive plan annually. And then hopefully we're staying in our zoning and subdivision regulations and revising as we go, not just waiting for ten, fifteen years in the future and rewriting them completely. If you see an influx of applications for variances to the zoning regulations and it's like everyone wants to build a seven hundred foot, square foot accessory structure, but we only allow five hundred and we approve every single one of them, maybe we look at the variance regulations to see if they're appropriate. If everyone subdividing neighborhoods wants to use five thousand square foot lots instead of seven thousand square foot lots, instead of putting that burden on them to do that every time, we approve it every time, let's revise it and just make it easier for everybody. So those, that's the type of activity I'm talking about annually. So obviously your city council will receive your recommendations for rezoning and special uses. And some of this varies from city to city. They are the final board of approval or body of approval for, for those types of cases. And then they accept public dedications of land during subdivision projects. So we've been working on some plats, uh, some subdivision plats. When they come to you, and I know that's probably the activity that you guys don't see as much of. If you guys continue to grow and if you're in a, a very growth kind of focused community, you'll see a lot of subdivision plats. So you guys approve subdivision plats. The only action that everybody takes is they accept the dedications on those plats, right of ways, easements, those types of things that are someone dedicating or giving to the city. So I just wanted to highlight that because I know you guys will probably see some in the future. You guys serve as the board of zoning appeals, correct? So that's not like that way in every community, so here's comprised of, of you guys. You guys will hear variance applications, some communities will do conditional uses. I think you guys is this planning commission for conditional uses. Some communities do board of zoning appeals for that, but those are generally pretty specific things.
How, is the planning commission and board of zoning appeals combined throughout our area?
I'd say everyone except for Wichita in our metro area, just because.
And, and why is that?
Just, uh, it's hard to staff one board.
That's what I thought.
Yeah, no, it's generally that, it's just hard enough.
Do you foresee that as maybe a potential conflict of interest?
Not generally, because it's like, I mean, I don't believe so, it's giving like an example of a case that board of zoning appeals will hear, right? If they're appealing, if they're adjudicating appeals of your decisions as the planning commissioner, yes. Then I think that's a conflict, but that's generally not the way that it works. Generally, board of zoning appeals will be hearing appeals to specific zoning regulations. I wanna build an eight foot fence as opposed to a six foot fence. Dustin told me I had to do something and I don't wanna do it. Those are the two that generally board of zoning appeals is hearing. So there are generally not hearing appeals of planning commissioner decisions. Yeah, if you guys ever get busy enough, right, then maybe we'll, you'll give a second.
I just sort of drawn a, a previous planning commission in Colorado and that was illegal actually to have the two boards combined. And it was for that, that reason of, that the planning commission would have made a decision and then they have to defend the decision, which kind of tainted the whole process.
Which here, right, so let's say zoning application, zoning case, you guys recommend approval, right? The city council overturns it and denies it. Their appeal isn't to you over the board of zoning appeal, their appeal is to judicial, you know, the county district court.
So I guess the lesson learned here is, is that for us, since we are combined, is to be very careful about how we approach, you know, both activities, make sure we do so fairly and, and without bias or.
Sure, yeah, those decisions shouldn't really be crossing paths, crossing lanes, so you should, I mean, yeah, it's good advice, right, but there's not a scenario where it's like, I might hear this as a BZA member, so I need to be careful about how I handle it as planning commissioner, those paths don't typically cross in Kansas.
Right.
So I'm assuming, so the, the professional staff that you guys rely on a lot, right? So, and by code, you'll have an appointed zoning administrator. Sometimes you'll have an appointed subdivision administrator too, so it just kind of depends from city to city. But these are the professional staff that you guys rely on to really run the day to day operations of a planning department. They're, you know, signing zoning permits when somebody comes in to actually, you know, build that house. A lot of them will need a build permit, right? Again, differences of community, sometimes that building permit will operate as a zoning permit, sometimes the zoning permit will need to be issued as well. So, and that's just affirming that the decision that you guys all made, that what's happening on that lot is going, is actually going to be constructed in conformance, so. Lawsuit, maybe? Pick in there. And again, they're, who's staffing this, right? So they're also dedicate a lot of their evenings to the community as well, so. Okay, so we're gonna talk about a specific process now. The process that I see most planning missions get themselves into trouble with. Again, I've been in communities that have been sued over this. I've only, only lost the lawsuit once and it was because of the, the zoning case was actually done before I got there. But I've seen both ways. I've seen it to where a city staff and commissioners have done everything right and were okay, you're right. And the law, I've seen it where there, things haven't gone well and a court has actually overturned of locality and the municipality's decisions. So we're, there's a lot of things you guys do, but we're gonna talk very specifically about the rezoning process here in a second. So generally speaking, whether it's a variance, a vacation, a subdivision plat, a rezoning, special use, a conditional use, all the things that we do, this graphic that you guys see up here is actually from your zoning regulations. So somebody spent a lot of time on putting that together and you can see that these processes can be fair, fairly convoluted. It's one of the critiques I have with kind of like modern planning schools, higher education, is we talk a lot about planning theory. You know, what's good for communities, but so much of what we do as planners in practice is process oriented. And because the rezoning process is so litigated over time, every one of these steps is generally there because of a state statute that somebody got sued and they had to clarify. So very prescriptive, right? You collect an application, email a notice at this certain date to these certain people. Certain amount of days has to elapse before you can have your public hearing. A certain number of days has to elapse from your public hearing to your city council. And all of those steps are really outside of our control. We just start tasked with implementing them. So different cases take different routes, but generally those routes are there for a reason. So any point in that process, depending on the actions, can completely deviate its path, right? So depending on the recommendations you guys get, depending on what your governing body, how they respond to that, can start a whole new process. So it's very regulated, we're not gonna get into those detailed steps. We're gonna talk specifically about one piece of what you guys do. We're gonna talk about how you guys review and how you consider rezoning applications. So you guys will be the first stop for any sort of public board or committee or commission for rezoning applications. So you guys review all of them. If you walk away with nothing else from tonight, if you walk away with one simple fact that if you are making determinations or recommendations based on your comprehensive plan, you will be considered as making a reasonable recommendation. Or again, just like I said earlier, your guys' interpretation of the comprehensive plan might be different, but if, if I'm a property owner and I don't agree with the decision that you have made and I wanna escalate that in one way or another, if you don't have a basis in your long range adopted comprehensive plan, the hill of reasonableness to prove you were making a reasonable decision is very, very difficult to get to. So again, that's kind of one of our planning tools. So you guys will see this and we'll talk a little bit about this more in a second, but these findings of fact, right? So you'll get a staff report that will have various components that we'll be assessing applications off of, which is typically referred to as findings of fact. I mentioned this earlier and it's also really important parts to walk away with this from. So quasi judicial versus legislative actions. When you guys are doing a comp plan, adopting a comprehensive plan, that's a legislative action. You're setting policy. When you guys are making determinations about how one specific property owner can, can use one specific property, you're acting in a quasi judicial fashion. You are acting as a judge in that, which we all know how criminal justice or civil, like the justice system works, is it's based on evidence, right? So when I'm acting as a quasi judicial individual or action, like you guys are in those cases, I'm making my decision on evidence and conformance to the comprehensive plan. So if I come in here and I say, I think this zoning application is going to cause an increase in traffic. I believe this application is going to cause overcrowding in our school system. I'm scared that this zoning application is gonna increase the crime rate in my city. Is that evidence? It's not, right? In itself, that is not evidence. If I come in and say, um, I've done an analysis, a study of the traffic impacts of this, of this development proposal and it's going to cause a, you know, let's say an engineer sees this, right? And it's gonna cause a projected increase in crash rates. Is that evidence? Debatable, right? But it's more than somebody coming up here and saying, I think this is going to cause X, Y and Z. And the problem we have with that as planning commissioners is that it's really tough, right? When you get a hundred people in a room, and I've been in, you know, planning commission meetings that have gone until three, four o'clock in the morning with hundreds of speakers. It happens. And it's really hard to be in that chair and make a decision when you have people that, you know, neighbors that are making those types of statements, but that's, that's our job, right? That's what we signed up for. So just understanding what role we're serving when is important. So when we're talking about a senior site, we're judges and this is a case that represents any evidence towards. If I'm here talking about a policy, like I wanna update a section of the comprehensive plan or review citywide goals or a policy that applies to everyone across the city, that's legislative in nature. So I'm gonna pause there for a second because I'm getting some, getting some looks like, what are you talking about? So any questions on quasi judicial versus legislative? Sign in if you guys think of one. But those are the two big things, right? Conformance with the comprehensive plan, base it, your recommendations as as much evidence as you can. Okay, where this came from, I'm not gonna get super, you know, legal scholar on you here, but we consider these findings of fact, you'll hear kind of the golden rules in Kansas. So this all comes from a Supreme Court case from nineteen seventy eight called Golden versus Overland Park where an individual wanted to rezone a property, it was denied, he wasn't appreciative of the denial and sued the city of Overland Park. Long, long story short, it eventually got to the Supreme Court, the state Supreme Court, where they established what we call the golden rules that we have to assess for every zoning. So at a very high level, what the gold, what this golden case did was that when we make decisions on land use matters, they've gotta be done fairly and impartially. You have to give public notice to allow for people the opportunity to come and have their voices be heard. You have to keep a record of the proceedings and a written order explaining the evidence and explaining those factors considered in making the decision is required. All things that your staff are making sure and taking care of already. So there's nothing that you guys are doing, but this is where this, you know, this hasn't been around. I think, you know, zoning became a thing in the, in the teens and twenties of the twentieth century. Didn't become, at least in Kansas, until nineteen seventy eight where we're like, wait a second, maybe we should put a little bit of more thought into the way that we're making these decisions. So that's the basics. What they said is every community that has zoning, that's making decisions over zoning, and this is gonna be a little different than in your printed version, so I revised it a little bit earlier today. So what I have up here is probably different than the printed version, but if you have one on your screen, it should be the same. So in that Supreme Court case, it said, if you're making decisions on land use, you must factor in the character of the neighborhood. And I'm gonna tell you right now, that's one that I have, I hesitate to say I have a love hate relationship with because I just don't really love it at all, but I don't wanna say I hate it, you know? So I just, I don't really like the neighborhood character part. Because what is neighborhood character? So is that my neighborhood is primarily made up of owner occupied units? Everyone owns their house in my neighborhood and that's the neighborhood character. So does that mean like if somebody wants to do rental units, that I should not recommend approval of that? I think most often people use community character as a catchall when they can't think of anything else. And I think most of the time, and I think, you know, there's definitely studies that show this. Again, this is part of the things we've learned over the last fifteen years, is that generally when people talk about community character, they're talking about the people in their neighborhood. They're not talking about the street layout or the mix of housing types or the architectural standards that are in the community. They're generally talking demographics, socioeconomic status. So again, like this is kind of a catchall, this one's a little bit dangerous in my opinion, but Dustin probably can, like you write and you guys receive, it is the zoning administrators findings of these and then you guys should be debating those. So anyway, I'll get off my neighborhood character tangent.
So in this C one here, you know, it allows residential and commercial. So we get sometimes, uh, a area that's primarily right now residential around it, but then they wanna put in, for instance, the, uh, a liquor store or something like that. I mean, is that character, I mean, to me, you know, I mean, you got residential, you're doing it forever. And, you know, even though we allow residential and commercial to.
Yes. The one, the problem I have is I could make an argument for that of ways. I'd say it furthers the neighborhood character or it threatens the neighborhood character, depending on what my perception is. And that's the problem that generally I have with neighborhood characters. So I don't have a perfect answer. I'll just say that as you guys are considering neighborhood character, do it carefully. Put the level of thought that it requires. Be able to understand what it is that somebody is saying when they, when they, when they reference. Um, be able to understand what it is that somebody's saying when they, when they, uh, when they reference neighborhood character. Um, what I, as an urban designer, an urban planner, am thinking about, I'm thinking about architectural standards. I'm thinking about, are these curvilinear streets, or is it a gridted street network? Um, are the streets tight, or are they wide? Um, you know, what's the lighting like in the neighborhood? Those are the types of things I'm thinking about, the neighborhood character. And depends like one neighborhood, like you might wanna mix of uses in one neighborhood. Um, the other one, you might for some reason not want the mix of uses. So it's more about the diversity of the built environment, the physical aspects to it, um, as opposed to the people that are living within it, if that makes sense. So I wish I had a lack of light answer for you, but I just urge caution when using neighborhood character.
Well, it seems, like, in this, in this case of the C1 district, I mean, you get a lot of input from neighbors.
Generally opposed?
Yes. Yeah. So, um, it just seems like it should have some kind of, uh, I guess, say, or, you know, I mean, you ought to be able to take into account that, uh, what they.
And we'll, we'll talk a little bit about that, 'cause this is a, like, and I guess I should, you know, when we are looking through, the golden factors are the ones that are specifically in your zoning code. This is, uh, it's not, there's not gonna be one thing in any of these lists where you're like, "That's the reason I'm gonna approve, that's the reason I'm gonna deny." You've gotta balance all of this. Um, and it gets really hard in some of these, uh, but if say, "I'm gonna recommend approval only because it's conformance with the neighborhood character," that's tough, right? Like, I would not advise you do that. But if you're like, "Yeah, I think it's, you know, it, you know, it fits the neighborhood character," whatever that is, and these other things, then I think that's a much better approach. And we'll talk specifically how that applies to, uh, public comment here in a second. So outside of the character of the neighborhood, um, the Supreme Court said you guys also must look at the zoning and uses of property nearby. Easy enough, right? Um, the suitability of the subject property, the property that's being, uh, that's subject of the zoning application for the uses to which it has been restricted. Let's say I've got an old farmhouse on Oliver, uh, that's on half an acre. Everything around it has developed. Um, is that half-acre lot appropriate for agricultural use? I'm not gonna say yes or no, but that's the type of question that you need to be asking. Um, is there something with, in that particular piece of property that makes the, its existing zoning not appropriate? I'm not saying that what's being applied for is appropriate, but I'm making a decision or determination on whether or not its current zoning is appropriate. Uh, the extent to which removal of the restrictions will detrimentally affect nearby property. I think this causes traffic volumes. I think it's gonna bring crime into my neighborhood, it's not evidence. Um, so handle those things as, uh, as appropriately as you can in each individual case. So the length of time the subject property has remained vacant as owned. So if I've got a vacant piece of property, no improvements, no structure, no nothing. And it's been that way for seventy years. It doesn't mean that it's remained vacant for seven years because of its zoning. It could, and that's what it's asking you to, to distinguish. So, um, I've got a half-acre lot with nothing on it that's zoned for agriculture. I literally cannot, under zoning, put a gas station on it or whatever. So it's not appropriate. You know, the, I could make the case potentially that it's remained vacant because it's zoning, it's not appropriate. So very much kind of coordinated with one of the ones that we talked about previously. I'm gonna skip the next one, we're gonna come back to that one, 'cause it's by far my favorite. And I say that sarcastically. So recommendations of permanent or professional staff. So you can use your professional staff's recommendation, obviously, to influence the decisions that you make. And then what, again, we've talked about it numerous times, uh, how does this zoning application, and how does this, uh, apply for use, conform with the plan that we're tasked with implementing? So that's your comprehensive plan. So this one is one that I think people struggle with, in my experience greatly. I even struggled, no matter how many times I've explained it, to explain it, so I'm gonna buy a little bit of, uh, credit here. So the relative gain to the public health, and I do, will say, that you guys have it rephrased a lot better in your regulations, which we'll look about and look at in a second. So the relative gain to the public health, safety, and welfare, our favorite phrase, right? Um, by the destruction in value of the impacted property, as compared to the hardship imposed upon the individual landowner. I've got a scale, right? If I approve the zoning application, is it gonna provide a public benefit that's greater than any harm caused by adjacent property owners? Whereas if, uh, if I deny it, is that general welfare for the public going to outweigh the hardship I place on the landowner that's making the application? So which way is the public going to benefit most? Public, not neighbors, but the community, right? So that's a really difficult situation that we're put in constantly as, as staff planners and by appointed and elected officials, is weighing the public benefit, the public at large, versus smaller amounts of those in, in, uh, in an area, right? So then just think of that one as a, as a, that I always imagine at scale, right? I locked us out that time, that timer won't get you. And I only have one more slide, and then we're done. So I've already gone about forty-five minutes longer than I wanted to, so. Wish happens, you can get them done. Okay, so you have to cover those basic findings of fact or golden rules in your zoning cases. Cities can do more, but they have to do at least that. So this next and last slide is the ones that are in your zoning regulations. So in your local laws, you have to consider these things in every resoning application. So you're gonna see some similarity, right? And then we're gonna talk about a few of those that are different. So character in immediate neighborhood, check, we already talked about that, we all love neighborhood character. Um, consistency with the comp plan and character, uh, of the city of Kechai. So again, we've covered that one quite a bit. One that's not included necessarily in the golden rules is adequacy of public utilities, roadways, and other needed public services relative to the anticipated impacts of the proposed use. So you'll see it summarized probably in some of your staff reports and some of these, in, in other places of, uh, what is the demand on the public services associated with this? And again, this gets pretty, uh, can get pretty convoluted pretty quickly. So that's an add to the golden rules. All good, you can do more, just can't do less. Suitability of the uses to which the property has been restricted under its existing zoning, directly from the golden rules. Length of time the property has remained vacant and zoned. If we're ma- if we're using that, we have to use that. If we're using it, we're gonna largely be in conformance with the, uh, the precedent set in, by the Supreme Court. The extent to which zoning, the zoning amendment may detrimentally affect nearby property, directly from, uh, again, from the golden rules, the proportion. See, this is where I think you guys, whoever wrote these probably did a little bit better job than, uh, the Supreme Court. So the proportionality of losses or impacts to individual owners in the immediate vicinity relative to the net public gain for the community at large. This is the scale question, right? And then the last one, which you'll notice is not part of the golden rules and the, uh, as set forth by the Supreme Court. You may also, in Kechai, consider public input or sentiment regarding the proposed use as voiced in the public hearing or other communication. So you have a public hearing, and you get a hundred people up here, you can factor what you hear from a public commenter into your determination. I'm gonna tell you, don't do it alone. Like, that can't be the only reason you're making your determination. It will not hold up in court if challenged. Remember, I told you we lost, uh, worked for a city where we lost one. So I can tell you from experience, it's not gonna work. And I, I think every community I've worked in, I've had somebody tell me, "Well, I knew a guy, a planning commissioner, that every case, he would ask, uh, the audience, 'Raise your hand if you're in favor of this application.'" And they'd raise their hand, right? Or people would raise their hand, he'd write it down. "Raise if you're opposed," and he'd write it down, and whichever one there was more of, that's how we voted. Don't do that. So you can factor that into it, but it's gotta have, I think that's not evidence, right? And I, you gotta, uh, understand, we're not psychologists, right? But I'm very much more prob- like, I'm probably gonna go make public comment about something I'm not in favor in as compared to if I am in favor of something. How many time, I can count on one hand, how many times in fifteen years I've been at planning commission, that I've had somebody come and speak in support of something. Literally, across a course, over hundreds of planning commission meetings. Um, so it can be a factor, but don't let it be your only factor. So when Dustin's writing his staff reports that you guys get, some of these are worded a little differently in the staff report that you guys get, but that's where those are coming from, in your zoning regulations. If you wanna consider more things, you change your zoning regulations. Um, but these, if you stick to these factors of review, you're going to make better decisions, arguably, uh, for your community, but you'll also be protecting your community in the profit, in, in the process. So, um, most often, I've seen it done in multiple ways. So you can adopt maybe your zoning administrator's findings of fact by reference. So in my motion, I just adopt the findings of fact. Um, and you don't cover each one of these. I've worked in communities where, uh, the chairperson will literally read, "Okay, finding of fact number one, character of the immediate neighborhood." And, uh, we'll read the zoning administrator's comments, and then the planning commission will debate literally just that one fact. Or they'll just say, "Concur." And we in our minutes were writing that down. So we've got a column for zoning administrator, we've got a column for planning commission, and then ultimately, we'll have a column for city council. So this is getting back into the Supreme Court, where it's saying, "We've gotta have at least some sort of record of what was happening during that." So, uh, you know, big organizations, a lot of times, it just, there's no right, wrong, way, well, there's definitely a wrong way to do it. As long as you're adopting these findings of fact somehow, whether it's by reference, just in a motion, to what your zoning administrator's putting together, or you're debating them, um, or verbally acknowledging it, as long as you're willing one of the two, you're fine. And then when it goes to the city council, um, some city councils will do the same thing, will, will read each one. Or they will only, uh, revise or amend them if they don't agree, and they want to maybe overturn or send something back. Some communities will say, you know, "I move to recommend approval of zoning case, blah, 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 based on factors four, seven, eight, and nine," so you can make a moral difference. So no right, almost said it again, there's definitely a wrong way to do it. There are, uh, scales of right. There's no one right way to do it, I guess I should say. So what you guys are doing is perfectly fine. So just knowing how all those pieces fit is probably the most important part. That's it for me, unless you guys have specific questions, or something you want me to get into a little further, or if you just wanna go home, we'll do it.
Well, I, um, I think where, where we've struggled somewhat with the Kechai background and the Golden background is how to define them as we're discussing their application while the whole room full of people listening to every word that she said. And I sometimes don't think the public understands the dilemma that had a decision body, both a, a commission like us or the city council, uh, how difficult that is. I've often wondered why, or could we, as a commission, have a donut time and coffee someplace and talk about what these words mean? How do we apply them? How do we come to grapple with things without that pressure of, of, of being on display?
I, I don't know, like, it's probably, I mean, I know for sure it's not anything specific to, to planning or zoning. You know, most people don't understand municipal process generally, right? Whether it's the police department, or fire department, or public works and utilities, or how drainage works. And all I know is my neighbor, um, you know, is put up a swing set in their backyard, and now my yard's flooding. It's like, yeah, you know, like, there's nuance to all of this. So I don't have a good answer for you, I've said that a few times, but I don't, like, you know, you can do as much as you want public information on us, and you'll get a small group. You know, so it's, uh, if we ever solve that and figure out how to have, what is Kechai population-wise?
About twenty-three hundred.
We had, if we have twenty-three hundred people that understands at a most, at its most basic level, planning, urban planning, community planning, zoning, um, then we'll have done the impossible. So I don't have a good answer. But I think that's part of what we're doing as planning commissioners, is when we're asking Dustin questions during a case, we might know the answer to it, right? But we're prompting a little bit of that conversation. And we do the same thing with staff when we present things. Every time, and Kylie will say, you know, I've said this in our office multiple times, whenever we're out in communities doing planning, we're there to solicit feedback or do a job in one way or another. But every time we're in the public, we have to be educating people because it can't just be planners and planning commissioners and staff members that are doing this work. Because it's hard when the public doesn't agree with what it is that you're doing. Uh, and most of the time, just 'cause they don't unders- they don't know. They don't know that sometimes when we plant streets, it's counterintuitively causing safety issues when we think we're.
So what I'm hearing you say, maybe the city ought to undertake some, uh, education of our fellow citizens.
I think you can definitely try.
I've, I've chaired, when I worked for the state, innumerable big lot permit sections. Out of all the years, I did it only once. Was there an individual that knew how to come before the, um, in the public, to the public hearing, and, and go through the permit, and actually really take us to task for what we were proposing to do? And that's because the individual understood what the process was and knew how to look at things and give that evidence. And with that evidence, we were able to make a, a good decision. So if, I think the city would be, I mean, put it in the, the utility bulletin, here's how to make a public comment.
Yeah, I mean, whether, I'm sure there's social media outlets and a bunch of different communication outlets, and you could do a, a, a planning tip of the week, or did you know, or a coffee with a planner, and, you know, there's all kinds of things you can do. Uh, but again, like, you, you know, you do as much as, uh, as much as you're able to do as a staff person, right? Especially when you're a lean staff, a small city, uh, you're wearing multiple hats as it is. So you just, you know, you're, I will never, never say that public education is not a good thing to do. Just have realistic expectations of the type of people that you're gonna reach and the impact that you're gonna have. Websites, uh, or, you know, keeping your website active, but most people, I mean, we probably all go to city websites, 'cause we're obviously involved, but if we're the average person, what, what do they go to the Kechai city website for? So that's tough. Communication is always tough. But every time you have a case, right, that's the time if you're really gonna educate, yeah. When you get, what's the most you've ever had in here for a public hearing?
We had people outside, out there.
Incredibly difficult to educate in that moment. But there will be a handful of people that are coming with open minds to those, and that you will, they might not admit it, 'cause they're around a bunch of neighbors, right? But those are the times that you probably will make the most difference in a public education perspective, but they're also the most high stakes and difficult. And I'm not, don't, I, you know, I would never advise a lecture to a crowd of people there to make public comment. But ask, uh, ask questions of your staff, um, that are communicating knowledge. Dustin, how does this application, can you explain, sorry, not to put no pressure on you, Dustin, but, uh, Dustin, can you explain a little bit more of how this conforms to our comprehensive plan? Say something. And remind me, what was the, you know, I can't remember, I wasn't here, what was the public engagement process during that public? And remind me, what was the, you know, I can't remember, I wasn't here, what was the public engagement process during that public, you know, during that comprehensive plan? Things like that, right? Or do you, are you aware of where a multifamily housing unit, uh, you know, is directly adjacent to a single-family housing unit currently in the city? That's wildly specific, so I apologize for planting that seed, Dustin, so.
No, it, it's there, yeah, we've already got it, yeah.
Yeah, and it's just like, those are the, like, when you're getting your staff reports on Friday, those are the types of things, like, so I'm sure you guys are spending all weekend preparing for Tuesday night with those staff reports, but, uh, I always appreciated it when I'd have planning commissioners or city council members, you know, send me questions over the weekend or in advance, so I could prepare those, so. And it's just, like, that's just good governance, in my opinion. So that was, that was a lot, um, and I probably took up way too much of your time, but any other questions? Experts, you guys are already experts, though. Any more questions, Mike? More questions?
Oh.
Thank you. Well, again, I appreciate you guys, like, it, it's a tough job, I said, you know, I, uh, I respect to those of you, I've always said that I'm done working. I'm gonna run for, I'm gonna get appointed to planning commissioner, run for city council. I'll probably only make it one term, probably ran out of office.
We got one right here.
Yeah. I haven't moved to Keachai yet, so.
Oh, we need somebody outside the city.
Yeah, probably a little too far, so.
Yeah.
But I appreciate you guys' time, obviously, we work with Dustin and, and Matt very closely, so, uh, we look forward to keep working with you guys and helping you guys get through, uh, all of your planning runs, so. Good?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Any comments from Dustin or Matt or anyone?
Nope.
Okay. In your opinion.
I still move.
Second?
One second.
Motion last, your second, Vladimir, to adjourn all tables.
Aye.